Hello to all the public that have tuned in. This is Thursday, November 12th, 2020. This is the Committee of the Whole, which is the first of three committee meetings this evening. All we have on the agenda tonight, we have one item, and it is appropriation ordinance 20-07. To specially appropriate from the general fund, enhance access fund, solid waste fund, risk management fund, and the rental inspection program fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated. Appropriating various transfers of funds within the public safety telecommunication telecommunication fund, alternative transportation fund, parking meter fund, cumulative capital development fund, fleet maintenance fund, police pension fund, and appropriating additional funds from the general fund, rental inspection fund, solid waste fund, and the risk management fund. And we've asked Controller Jeff Underwood to attend this evening. Mr. Underwood, are you ready to present?
I am ready to present. Good evening, council members and public. I'm going to try and share my screen here. Can you see that all right?
Yes.
Okay. Appropriation ordinance 2007, this is our comprehensive 2020 year end appropriation. We know for those of you who've been around for a while, we come to you in the fall and those new ones and kind of true up, as I call it, the different departments and different funds that may need transfers or may need additional funds for items that weren't anticipated. The total additional appropriation request is 1,530,400. This request covers 11 different funds, of which only four are needing additional funds. The other seven funds are only requesting to move monies between major categories. This can be broken down into four major components. The first relates to COVID-19 expenditures totaling $549,000. This is further broken down into, you'll hear tonight, of $154,000 requests from community and family resources department, $240,000 from information technology, and then $155,000 in various requests among all different departments. As you know, the federal government through the state has allocated COVID-19 funding. We have submitted applications for those funds, and I'll talk a little bit about the initial request tonight. And then probably in the first quarter of next year, we'll come back for appropriation of the remainder of the funds. The second relates to the need to appropriate move funds from the general fund to the risk management fund, totaling $694,000. This is one of those strange ones where the request is coming from the general fund to risk management. So you see a $397,000 request in the office of the controller, and then you'll see later on a request from risk management for those funds. So it kind of doubles up when we total the additional appropriation. The third replaces relates to the housing inspection funds, and this is related to our annual appropriation and transfer into the general fund. State statute requires that we accumulate all revenues from rental inspections into the rental inspection fund. And then we're allowed at the end of the year to transfer those funds back into the general fund, specifically for the housing and neighborhood development, where those funds, the expenditures for that program has been expended. So it just appropriates that money, moves it over, and we basically are reimbursing ourselves for those. The fourth one is a small one. This is appropriation from the general fund, and that'll be out of the controller's office. That will be transferred to the parks general fund. If you remember early this year when we did recover forward funds, there was a $50,000 allocation from the parks department, and we neglected to include that in the appropriation to move over to them. So that cleans this up. One other issue was related to an unforeseen issue. Every four or five years, we end up, we pay biweekly. Typically, there are 26 pays in a year. And because of the calendar and leap year, you end up with a year where there's 27 pays. We followed the guidance from our software company on how to calculate those amounts and how to put them into the system. We did that, and then after the budget was passed and we were beginning to get ready to start the year and pay those first payrolls out, we realized that it had not, in fact, calculated that correctly. The software company did contact us, and the error was identified and corrected. However, it was too late for us to correct from a funding standpoint. So you'll see a lot of references to funds being transferred in to cover that 27th pay. Starting out with the general fund, and this is the big one as far as all of the informations that's in there. The majority of this ordinance transfers between departments and categories to cover changes between the initial budget and the actual operational results. For those of you that have been around, we typically, this request typically ends up being a net of zero, but due to some unusual circumstances, we're actually asking for an appropriation of $871,400 into the general fund. The fiscal impact, however, is that there will be $549,000 in COVID-19 funding that we'll be able to transfer in for that. In addition, we're transferring $232,000 from the rental inspection funds for a total of 781. So the actual net impact will be a negative $90,000 from the general fund balance. The ordinance will have no fiscal impact on the city's property tax rates. We'll get into the individual departments now. Real quickly, I'm going to read a synopsis, and then I'll go through these individually. The animal shelter, animal care and control is just requesting a transfer, so there's a net of zero. The Public Works Administration Department is returning $38,000. The clerk's office is transferring money, so a net of zero. Community and Family Relations is doing a $50,000 transfer, and they'll have a net additional appropriation of 104,000. For the council, there's a transfer and a net increase of $3,200. Controller's office, $397,000 increase. Economic and Sustainable Department, a release of $60,000. The fire department, an additional appropriation of 60,000. Leo Department, a release of $11,000. The mayor's office, an increase of 6,200. The police department, an increase of 302,800. Human Resources, a decrease of 195,000. Information Technology Service, an increase of 310,000.
I'm sorry, point of order, I think your slides aren't following along with.
I'm just reading, yeah, I'm just reading the synopsis, and then I'll get into the details.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry. Thank you.
I just wanted to, it will relate to the requests in the individual apartments. So I'll go through the details. Board of Safety, an increase of $200. Board of Works Facilities, an increase of $23,000. And Planning and Transportation, a decrease of 31,000. The net of all of those is the 871,400. So now we'll dive into the details. Animal Care and Control, the Public Works Department is requesting a $25,000 transfer from classification three to classification one personnel services. This will assist in covering for the 27th pay and higher than anticipated temporary salaries and wages. So they're going to decrease their classification three, increase their classification one. Public Works Administration, the Public Works Department is requesting a $9,000 transfer from classification three services to classification one personnel services to assist in covering the cost of the 27th pay period. In addition, this releases $38,000 from classification three services as projected expenses will be below the budget for 2020. The funds that are being released to cover this shortfall will be used for other departments. So Animal Shelter, a net of zero. Public Works Administration, negative $38,000, a release of funds. The clerk's office is requesting a $2,500 transfer from classification three, classification one. Again, this is related to the 27th pay, the net is zero. Community and Family Resources, they're requesting a transfer of $50,000 from classification one personnel services, classification three services. In addition, they're requesting an additional appropriation of 104,000. The combination of these requests is an increase in their classification three services. They're going to use $100,000 to be used for the city's portion of funding for the county's COVID-19 testing facility, and an additional 54,000 is being requested to be used to fund the city's portion of the temporary women's winter shelter. So their net request is $104,000. The council's office is requesting a $6,800 transfer from classification three services to classification one personnel services. In addition, the office is requesting an additional appropriation of 3,200 in classification one, and this is related to the 27th pay period. Controller's Office, we're requesting a $50,000 transfer from classification one, classification three services. In addition, we're asking for additional appropriation of $397,000. And as I said, $397,000 will go to the risk management division, and we'll talk about that need. And the other $50,000 will go to the Parks Department to make them whole on the recover forward funds. Economic and Sustainable Development, they're requesting to release $20,000 from classification one personnel services and $40,000 from classification three services. These savings are a result of positions that were vacant during the year and services and programs that they were not able to hold due to COVID-19 restrictions. So a net release of $60,000 for them, and that goes to cover other shortfalls. Fire Department is requesting a transfer of $175,000 from classification three services to classification one personnel services. In addition, the department is requesting an additional appropriation of $60,000 in classification one personnel services. The combination of the transfer and the additional funds will assist in covering the 27th pay, additional overtime to cover COVID-19 expenses. So their net appropriation is $60,000. The legal department is requesting a $5,000 transfer from classification three services to classification one. That will assist with the 27th pay. Department is also requesting release $1,000 from classification two and $10,000 from the classification three services for a net of $11,000 release that will be used to cover other shortfalls in other departments. Office of the Mayor is requesting a $26,000 transfer from classification three services to classification one. In addition, the office is requesting an additional appropriation of $4,000 in personnel services and 2,200 in classification two supplies. The net increase of $6,200 will be used to assist in covering the 27th pay and supplies that were purchased to cover COVID-19 expenses. So a net increase of $6,200. The Police Department is requesting a transfer of $9,200 from classification three services, classification two supplies. This transfer will assist in covering costs associated with COVID-19 expenditures. They're also requesting a transfer of $9,000 from classification four capital, classification two supplies, and this will cover repairs to damaged vehicles. In addition, the office is requesting an additional appropriation of $275,000 in classification one personnel services. This will be used to do a combination of things, COVID-19 overtime and absences, as well as costs related to the contract between the city and police union. You'll remember that was ratified late in 2020, after the, late in 2019, after the 2020 budget was adopted. So there were no funds that were initially budgeted for that contract. Additionally, the department is requesting additional appropriation of 27,800 in classification two, and that supplies to cover expenditures due to COVID-19. Human Resources Department is requesting to release $185,000 from classification one personnel services and $10,000 from classification three services. The bulk of the released funds related to funds that were budgeted in classification one for the final implementation of the salary study. So it was all budgeted in one department. This releases it to be moved around to others. So the total release is $195,000. Next up is Information and Technology Service. They're requesting additional appropriation of $70,000 in classification one personnel services, $140,000 in classification three services, and $100,000 in classification four capital, for a total request of 310,000. Request for classification one will assist in the 27th pay period, as well as funding a position that was created mid-year, and obviously wasn't funded at that time. The remaining request will be used to cover related cover equipment and services needed to serve employees working remotely due to COVID-19 restrictions. So beefing up software, beefing up equipment and to make sure that we are able to conduct business safely. Finally, the big one of the night, the Board of Public Safety. Legal Department is requesting an additional appropriation of $200 in classification one, and that's to cover the 27th pay. Public Works Facilities Maintenance, Public Works Department is requesting a transfer of $10,000 from classification two services to $20,000 and $20,000 from classification four to classification two services. These transfers will be used for ongoing repairs and maintenance of showers, city hall, HVA systems. In addition, the department is requesting an additional appropriation of $23,000 in classification one personnel services, and that will be covered the 27th pay, as well as temporary staff that was brought on as part of the write and beat down project. Finally, Planning and Transportation is requesting the release of $2,000 from classification two supplies and $29,000 from classification three services. This release of fund is mainly due to reduction in the use of supplies, along with travel and training due to restrictions by COVID-19. So if people didn't travel, they were doing online. So they're releasing a total of $31,000. So that covers all of the general fund, again, total additional request of 871,400. Jumping into the other funds in the Public Safety Local Income Tax Fund, and this is for Central Dispatch. As you remember, we have three departments that get funding from that, police, fire, and central dispatch. They're requesting an $11,050 transfer from classification two supplies to classification three services. And this was needed for unanticipated repairs to HVAC and related systems. There is no fiscal impact due to this request, as the net impact is zero. Nonreverting Telecommunications Fund, Information Technology Services Department is requesting a transfer of $3,000 from classification three services to classification four capital. And again, this is associated with their general fund request to cover equipment being purchased for staff working remotely due to COVID-19. Again, this is a net transfer of zero, so there is no fiscal impact due to this request. Alternative Transportation Fund, the Police Department is requesting a transfer of $15,000 from classification three services to classification one personnel services and 4,500, of which $4,500 will be used to cover the 27th pay and another 10,000 to classification two supplies to cover higher than expected credit card fees from the payments or permits. We've tried to go completely online with those. So more people were using credit and debit cards, their fees went up. There is no fiscal impact on this through this request, because again, it's a net transfer of zero. Parking Meter Fund, the Parking Services Division is requesting a transfer of $51,800 from classification two supplies to classification three services. This will cover costs associated with transitioning staff and equipment from the Police Department to the Parking Services Division. There's no fiscal impact due to this request. Sanitation Fund, Public Works Department is requesting an additional appropriation of $30,000, increasing classification one personnel services, a combination of need to cover additional temporary employees due to absences related to COVID-19 and the 27th pay. They're also requesting a transfer of $20,000 from classification two supplies to classification three services. And this will be used to cover fees related to increase in solid waste and recycling tonnages related to shelter in place, so people were staying home. And so it increased the amount of trash and recyclables that we were picking up. There's no fiscal impact due to this request, as the additional funds have previously been budgeted or in the general fund, as you remember. Fees cover a portion of that budget, and then we appropriate funds in the general fund to transfer over as needed to supplement that department. Risk Management, the legal department is requesting the transfer of $2,000 from classification two supplies, classification one personnel services to cover costs related to the 27th pay period. They're also requesting a transfer of $7,000 from classification two supplies and an additional appropriation of 397,000 transferred into classification three for services to cover the settlement of two longstanding serious worker compensation cases. There's no fiscal impact due to this request, as the funds will be transferred in from the general fund. And that's where I mentioned that there's a double, you'll see it twice. It gets appropriated in the general fund, controller's office, and then it'll get transferred down into risk management. We have to appropriate it for those expenditures. Fleet Maintenance Fund, the Public Works Department is requesting a transfer of $10,000 from classification three services, classification one personnel services to cover costs related to the need for additional temporary employee to cover increases in repair and maintenance services, and a transfer of $5,000 from classification three, classification two supplies to cover costs related to purchase of additional small tools and equipment. Again, there's no fiscal impact due to this request, as it's a zero transfer. The Cumulative Capital Development Fund, the Public Works Department is requesting a transfer of $100,000 from classification two supplies to classification three services. And this is to accommodate the contracting of companies to provide services related to the neighborhood sidewalk repair program. So additionally, it basically allows us to do an additional $100,000 of sidewalk repairs. And again, since it's a net transfer of zero, there's no fiscal impact. And then finally, the Police Pension Fund, the Controller's Office is requesting a transfer of $200 from classification three to services to classification one, the personnel services to cover the cost related to the 27th pay period. And again, it's net of zero. So there is no fiscal impact due to this request. Finally, as I've noted, the rental inspection program. In 2012, the state legislator created new rules regarding rental inspection programs. This requires the city to deposit receipts from the program in a designated fund. As of September 30th, that funded collect approximately $232,000 for the 11 prior months. Although the revenues accounted for in the new fund, expenditures for the program are still appropriated in the general fund. As such, we'll be creating an invoice to reimburse the general fund from the rental inspection fund. There's no fiscal impact to this fund, as this is simply a transfer of revenues collected in this fund to the general fund to cover those expenses where they were budgeted. This has a positive fiscal impact to the general fund of $232,000. And thank you for your consideration of this request, and I'm happy to try and answer any questions that you might have on this.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. We'll now go to our council, my council colleagues for questions, and I'll answer or get to you as I can see, and I see Councilmember Volin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Underwood, thanks for the presentation. One thing I'd like to clarify is how much, what is the gross expense of the 27th pay period? And what is the net impact on the proposal? What portion of this is the 27th pay period?
I will have to double check those numbers for you, council member. I don't know exactly what the gross payroll is, because we pay them at different boards and commissions. It's not a big portion of it, because departments were able to save money during the year with vacancies and things.
That's what I figured. So I mean, in your rough estimation, without doing any actual math, you know, hard math, what portion of the 871,000 is due to 27th payroll?
The net on category one in the general fund was just under 380,000.
Okay, so it's maybe half of this.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, that helps. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember Scambler.
Thank you. One just requested correct, I think, I'm assuming it's a typo. In the ordinance, general fund, economic and sustainable development, the department is listed incorrectly. It's listed as sustainability development. I'm guessing that was just a spell check. So if we could correct that. And also, you mentioned, check me if I got these numbers correctly. You said that we had 549,000 in COVID expenses for which we were anticipating being reimbursed. Did I understand that correctly? And what, two questions for that. One, what's the timetable for that? And two, how confident are we that it'll come in at 549?
I, the request, we will receive more than this 549. And we have submitted three applications for payment. I believe we received notice today that those had been certified and that checks would be cut. Those funds are required to go into a special fund, and then you appropriate the funds out of that. So the first request from the administration is $549,000 out of that. And then we'll come back to you in sometime in the first quarter of next year after meeting with council leadership on the timing of the additional monies. But I'm very confident that we're going to get those funds.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmembers Scambler. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I guess my biggest question is, so this has a fiscal impact of $90,000 when we take into account the money we're going to get from, to cover COVID-19 expenses. Where does that $90,000 come from?
It'll come from the general fund balance.
So it's sort of dipping into our extra money?
At this point in time, yeah. Then obviously, we'll come back in the spring and report how we actually ended up the year. So it could well be that it doesn't have any fiscal impact due to other reversions. But right now, the net's 90.
Okay. Thank you. I have another question. Should I save this, Vice President Sims?
I'm sorry. I don't see anyone else waiting, so go ahead, please.
In the Public Works Facilities Maintenance Budget, in the text and also in your presentation this evening, it says that $10,000 will be transferred from classification two and $20,000 from classification four. Both of those sums will go into classification two.
That's correct.
First of all, it doesn't make sense to transfer something from category two to category two. Secondly, in the actual ordinance, it says that those two sums go into category three. So I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's a typo in my memo and in this. It's, that should have say into classification three services. It's, the services is right, the number's wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Do we have any other? Councilmember Rallo.
Thanks, Mr. Underwood. Are the COVID expenses, are they to date? And we're going to be anticipating further expenses. Could you speak on that a bit?
Yeah, this is, I think that what departments have done is they've tried to, one, we track the actual numbers. We, inside of our software, we created codes to track actual expenditures so that we could easily account for those. And then in the request, obviously, this is through the end of the year, so they would anticipate any other expenditures they might have had through the year. So they would have been accounted for in the overall request.
I see. So we'll probably be revisiting this in January or February?
Absolutely, yes.
Have any further questions from council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, for the sanitation fund. So they're requesting an additional appropriation of $30,000.
Right.
And, but it says there's no fiscal impact. Could you explain that, please?
Yes, if you'll remember, when we do the budget, this is one of those strange ones where we calculate, we do the budget and see what the total is, and then we estimate what we believe the revenues for the department will be. The revenues are never sufficient to cover the entire budget, so we have an additional appropriation inside of the general fund under sanitation. So what we do is, we will spend out of the sanitation fund itself and collect the revenues into that. And then, as we get towards the end of the year, whatever the net needed is, we transfer from the general fund into the sanitation fund. So this just increases the appropriation inside of the sanitation fund, but there are sufficient funds already budgeted in the general fund. sufficient funds already budgeted in the general fund to cover that thirty thousand dollars, so the net impact is zero.
Do you know how this compares with previous years, as far as the amount of general fund money that has to subsidize sanitation?
I'll know that, we'll report that after the end of the year. I don't know what it is right now, but when we get down to the end, we always true it up, and we'll be able to tell you how much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, Mr. Underwood, I, can we go to the legal request from General Fund Legal? And I just try to follow the numbers that I have, and it seems like your presentation was a little bit different, and it's probably my misunderstanding, but can we go over that just one more time?
Yes, if you look in the Controller's Office, we're appropriating three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but we're releasing fifty thousand dollars from our.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, just the legal depart, legal department.
Okay, sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. Everything else checked out, I just, maybe I missed her.
The legal department is, they're asking to increase their Category One by five thousand dollars.
Yes.
They're gonna, they're gonna reduce their Category Two by a thousand, and reduce their Category Three by fifteen thousand. The net is a negative eleven thousand dollars that they're releasing back.
Okay, I thought on your presentation, I saw ten thousand in Category Three, so, okay, that, that corrects it. Okay, thank you, that clarifies it. Any further questions from my colleagues? Okay, now we'll go to public comment on appropriation ordinance twenty-seven. Please use the raised hand function in Zoom, or send us a note in the chat function. Mr. Lucas, are you monitoring that this evening?
I am, yes, and for folks who haven't used the raised hand function before, that can be found by clicking on the Participants button at the bottom of your screen, and clicking Raise Hand, or you can send a message via chat. Not seeing anyone at the moment.
Okay, we'll give them a few seconds. And then in the words of our current president, I'll go, going once, going twice, enough. Okay, seeing none. We'll go back to council for final comments. Does any of my colleagues have any final comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I just want to thank the Controller's Office for doing all the number crunching. This time, I put all the numbers in an Excel spreadsheet and made sure all the numbers came out right. That was just my way of processing this mega ordinance, so I'm sure you have many, yes, many Excel sheets yourself, but that really helped me to make sure everything was, was coming out right, so I don't have any, any further hesitation about this. I, actually, Councilmember Scambleri mentioned a typo, and I, I found several typos, so I'll, I'll email you about that, and we can just do one little amendment to fix those, I think.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Volan.
Yes, hello. Thanks for the presentation, and I just, like, as the person who scheduled this, I wanted to make it clear to members what our options are here.
Okay, while we wait for Councilmember Volan, and we'll come, you, you froze throughout most of your presentation, and we didn't really hear anything.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know where I left off, but.
Neither do we.
Okay, well, let me try it again. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, this is just sort of a scheduling issue, so the reason that we're on the agenda we are is because any amendments to this appropriation ordinance that councilors want to make that would increase a line item would need to be approved by December 2nd, so the ordinance could be re-advertized. So tonight is an excellent opportunity for anyone to express their intent to bring an amendment that would increase a line item. It would still have to be, have the cooperation of the administration, but it would need to be filed by next Wednesday, and it would probably be taking up, taken up next week because of the Thanksgiving holiday. So I just wanted to let members know that, you know, this is why we're on the schedule that we're on, and it's important to indicate your intent tonight to file an amendment that might increase a line item, or to, to otherwise change the ordinance so that it would have to be re-advertized. Anyway, I just wanted to make sure that, that opportunity was clear to everybody. I think it's probably unlikely based on what I've heard tonight. You just scheduled. So, that's, thank you.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Any further final comments from my colleagues? Councilmember, Councilmember Rallo.
I've got a follow-up question, may I ask?
I'm sorry, yes.
May I ask a question? Okay, Mr. Underwood, regarding the funding for fifty-four thousand dollars for the winter, Women's Winter Shelter, what is, how long is that funding? What, what does it cover temporarily?
I will, I will check with you on that. I don't know specifically, but I know it's a temporary shelter, it's our portion, there's additional funding that will come in from other entities to fund it, I believe, through the winter months. Now exactly how many, we'll have to find out.
Okay, I just wondered if it's just through.
I don't believe Beverly's on the call.
You're very fit, Mr. Underwood.
I don't believe Beverly is on the call, so we'll, I'll find out.
If you could do that and reply by email, that would be appreciated, thank you.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. Any further final comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, Councilmember Rallo's comment reminded me that I wanted to thank the administration very much for their initiative in supporting both the Wheeler Women's Shelter and the new COVID testing site, which is much better located for, for people here close to the center of town, so I'm very happy to support both of those initiatives.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Okay, I'm the final one. I too want to thank Mr. Underwood for all your due diligence and hard work, you and your staff, and I'll tag along with Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and I'm happy to see the administration do provide some services that really some of our most vulnerable population could really use during this time. Seeing no further council members' final comments, I believe we're ready for a do-pass recommendation. And if we are, I will start within the order in which I see you on the screen, so we'll start with Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambleri.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rallo.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Volan.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, that do passes eight-zero. I will explain to the public that our ninth member, Councilmember Rosenbarger, is not present with us here in this committee of the whole meeting this evening, to explain the number discrepancy. I do, thank you, Mr. Underwood. I do believe that finishes our committee of the whole business for the evening. Mr. Lucas, do you have anything to add?
Just a note on the scheduling of this item, so with the committee's recommendation tonight, there will not be a second committee meeting, and as alluded to by Councilmember Volan, there is an advertising requirement for additional appropriation ordinances, which mean that this item won't return to the full council until December the second now, so that the Controller's Office has time to publish the statutorily required notice in the newspaper, so there won't be any, any more deliberation on this item until that December the second meeting date.
Councilmember Volan.
Yes, Mr. Lucas, just to confirm, so at this point, customers would still have the privilege of being able to amend to cut, but they would not be able to amend to increase.
That's correct.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Lucas?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, public and my colleagues, it seems like our business this evening has concluded. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Point of order, Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can we just have a restatement of the meetings that will follow, because we have committees following this tonight? Mr. Lucas?
Yes, yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Lucas.
Yes, the council's administration committee is scheduled to meet tonight at six-thirty, and the council's public safety committee is scheduled to meet tonight at seven-thirty, and each of those committees is considering one item, so all of those meetings will take place on the same, same Zoom link for the members of the public who are attending all three meetings. No need to leave and look for another link.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, now our business has concluded. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second now. I don't think we have to do a roll call voting, there's just show me your hands. All those in favors are, okay, all hands down, is there anyone against or opposed? Thank you all. See you in the next meeting if you're on it, on the third meeting, if you're fortunate enough to be on that one as well. And other than that, we'll see you next time around. Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Thank you.